Good evening. This is the annual meet, actually, monthly meeting of the Galt City Council. It seems like we've been here a year today. We just returned from closed session. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. City Council's in closed session this afternoon on public employment relating to police chief and finance director, and also conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, and there's no action to report.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Here.
Councilmember Hewer?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Powers?
Here.
Mayor Cruz?
Here. Could you all rise, please, for a silent prayer, after which Councilmember Hewer will lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting will air Friday, February 19th at 9:00 a.m., and Saturday, February 20th at 9:00 a.m. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Agenda approvals, additions or deletions, council? Do we have any?
No, not for me.
Very good, then we'll move straight into our presentations. General Heart Defect Awareness Week, Tiny Smiles Foundation presentation.
Thank you, guys. Somebody told us your last. Just for case of convenience, I brought pictures of a gentleman named Greg Murphy and my son Tiny. My name is Rick Keizer, I'm the founder and co-leader of an organization that we call Tiny Smiles. Some of you know about that, we've been here several years in a row asking for recognition of a general heart defect week, which runs from the 7th through the 14th. Again, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We started our organization roughly four years ago, after our son died from a general heart defect. He was born, he got his left ventricle, he had what's called hypoplastic left heart syndrome. After his second surgery, he passed away, about three weeks after. And so our family has decided to keep his name alive with this organization, Tiny Smiles. One of our big events is our half marathon that we just had, and the newspaper was incredibly gracious to us. We got the compaged, I think, two weeks in a row, which was fantastic. But one of our friends that we met two years ago, I met him through another organization that he and I co-chair for the first time, was called Project Adam. Project Adam started in Wisconsin in 1999 after a gentleman by the name of Adam Mel passed away, was 14-years-old, died suddenly on a basketball court. His father, Adam's dad, has done everything he could to make sure that organizations or areas where there are lots of people, that there are these automatic external respirators. So Greg Murphy and I have served on this board together. We had discussed having him come down to our race last year, which was 2015, if you map. And so Greg and two of his girls who were with us tonight came and they participated in our event. Greg was there to teach our people how to do CPR, participants how to do CPR, how to use the automatic external respirators. Nationally, what we know is somewhere around 2,000 kids will have a sudden cardiac event every year. And when I say kids, I mean 14-years and younger. The rate of adults 15 and older is 700, so it's unfortunately, the odds, kids and adults are simply dropping and they're not coming back for it without these injuries. If somebody is defibrillated within a few moments of their collapse, within a minute or two, the survival rate increases to around 70%. Without it, the odds are somewhere around 14%. So back to Greg Murphy. Last year, he ran our five-kilometer race. While he was there with us, he lost his two-year-old, Courtney and Lucy, in Windmills last year. They placed in their age groups. He danced a little zumba, which, no, well, that's all I'll say. He had this huge smile about him the whole day. Greg excused himself to go to the restroom and collapsed, and he died. Greg was only 42-years-old, and I think it was ironic, because tomorrow would be his 44th birthday. So I think there's Tiny and all of this that was taking place. As I told you, we've decided to keep Tiny's name alive, and his three-year-old, Brittany and Courtney and Lucy have also decided to keep their dad's name alive. They showed up in full force in our race last weekend, and they're here tonight for our presentation. So on behalf of Tiny Smiles, Project Adam, cardiac science between Greg and I for and each of the fellows, we are giving to the city, specifically, which involves our work with, on several, that defibrillator for use there, which will, along with that, the finances, it's a very comfortable thing to do, so. It's our hope and our prayer that that defibrillator will be just even ever used, but statistics of all this, I don't know. So thank you for letting us give this to you. And I have all of my family and board. The meeting room's getting very quiet, and there is something. Are there any questions? Can I just get a just important question?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Do you guys want to get me off? I need to remember, because they have been such tempers a little often right now, they have one of the moments, when you pronounce that, maybe it's a baby eater, everything is a little confusing, and all of their words, and certainly all of their dad's words.
Thank you, sir.
Can I stand on the stairs for a second?
Sure.
They go a little embarrassing. There you go. And everything is here, with a package and directions and a login and a defibrillator. So I'm going to want to land right in your hands. Thank you.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items.
Mine doesn't show that. Ah! There's an error here. Sorry, we have another presentation from Sacramento Transportation Authority.
Mr. Mayor and council members, there should be a packet coming around. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if it made it all the way out. Upies of our PowerPoint are coming around there, and apologize if we didn't get it before the meeting. This item is to give you an update. You've had some news tidbits over the last year or so, as the Sacramento Transportation Authority has been meeting with various advisor groups to look at the potential and the feasibility of possibly augmenting the existing Measure A gas sales tax for road and transportation purposes with an additional measure to help us do more to overcome historic problems with the gasoline tax and its inability to keep up with both inflation, construction costs, and changing driving patterns of our public as they move to hybrids and other types of vehicles. And so the SDA Board has undertaken a look at this, and we wanted to give you an update because they're about ready to start mailing to residents of the various communities within Sacramento County some information about upcoming education piece, about what a new measure could do for us, and we don't want to catch the council by surprise. So at the back of your packet is actually a draft mailer piece that they're considering, and it's custom, they customize these for each city in the region or each area within the region. And so on page two, you see some Galt-centric information of that. And without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Gwen to give you a quick brief overview of sort of what's coming to a neighborhood near you.
Okay, so briefly, we're just talking about the information for Measure A and Measure B, which is Measure A Next. So basically, Measure A was on the ballot in 2004, it's for Sacramento County, it's a sales tax, it's a half percent sales tax. It passed with 75% voters in favor of it, and it took effect in 2009, and it sunsets in 2039. Now, Measure B, which is what they're calling Measure A Next, is, with that, they have a professional advisory group, which consists of Sacramento County agencies. They are proposing a supplemental half-cent sales tax. It's being proposed for the November, excuse me, November 2016 ballot. Basically, with the education, they're going with fix-it-first potholes, et cetera. With this, they have, they've done some outreach, the consultants for SDA, and also some opinion research. There's mailers that are going to be going out to the registered voters, as Steve has identified, and SDA had asked for what the agency's top priorities are. So I just want to spend a couple of minutes talking about our top priority. So this map right here is from our traffic capital improvement program. So basically, when we started this process, which we started about in 2014, I worked with the previous city manager to determine what the city's regional priority would be. And we had discussion about whether it would be Simmerhorn Interchange or the Walnut Interchange. Basically, with the Simmerhorn Interchange, that's the interchange that is east of 99, it's north of A Street and south of Simmerhorn. With the construction of the Central Galt Interchange, the Simmerhorn commercial area, which is north of the A Street Bridge, that interchange could serve, from a traffic perspective, that whole area in there. The actual Simmerhorn off-ramp has a little bit of issues going on with it, and so with the Simmerhorn Chevron, we developed an interim improvement for a roundabout. Okay, so then we went and discussed the Walnut Interchange. For the Walnut Interchange, in that area to the west of State Route 99, that area is in the process of currently being annexed to the city. It's an industrial area. For that area to actually be built out, we would need the Walnut Interchange to actually move forward. So with that, the thought behind having the Walnut Interchange as the priority is that Simmerhorn Commercial could move forward with the existing improvements, the Walnut Interchange would allow the industrial area to be developed. And so when we went through the process of updating our traffic capital improvement program in 2015, we included the Simmerhorn Roundabout as an interim improvement, and then we also included the Walnut Interchange. The beauty about the Walnut Interchange is that there are currently trips that are served by the Twin Cities roundabouts that would use the Walnut Interchange if they could have access, full access. So when the Walnut Interchange is actually installed, it will divert traffic from the Twin Cities roundabouts and the ramps and provide a longer useful life to the existing interim improvements at Twin Cities. With that, both the Walnut, as I stated, the Walnut Interchange and the Simmerhorn roundabouts are included in the TCIP. The TCIP actually, for the Walnut Interchange, was the only project that required outside funding above and beyond developer impact fees. The outside funding would be potentially state, federal, and also Measure A. With that, this is informational item for council regarding the city's suggestion, staff's suggestion of what the SDA priorities are, and we're available for any comments or to give any specific direction. This is anticipated to be mailed out in the next few weeks from the SDA consultant.
So if there's any concern with staff's opinion as to our top priority, that being for Measure A or Measure A Next funding, other, if there are council opinions that that is not a good choice for our top priority, this would be the time, because we need to have them change that if there's council direction for other than the Walnut Interchange. Again, it's the major, sort of the flagship interchange, it's in our TCIP program, but it is going to require an additional $10 to $15 million in outside funding to ever be completed beyond what developer fees would cover. So that's why we would put that as sort of our target. If additional transportation funding would come Galt's way from another sales tax measure, that that would be staff's recommendation as our top priority. It also would tend to compete better at the SACOG and SDA level as a more regional project as opposed to some of the minor collector's streets that are more internal to Galt circulation.
Steve, as we talked last week, and I just became aware of the selected interchanges being Walnut Avenue and Highway 99, and as I, as we discussed, I had a concern, a couple of concerns. One, that, you know, I was on my way to the SDA meeting and found out about this, but secondly, I look at it, and I understand that we, that we have an annexation pending for lands north of the industrial park. But I also look at the Twin Cities interchange, and I realize that we've done the roundabouts there, but still, the need for a full interchange at Twin Cities does not go away. And as we discussed, these are, the roundabouts were interim improvements, you estimated maybe 10 years in longevity, and then we've got to have another project, or we've got to do something, because they wouldn't operate at the level that they should. My concern is, when you look at the Twin Cities interchange and you look at existing traffic volumes on 104 as well as Highway 99, and you've got future development potentially going east of Highway 99, and looking at the amount of commercial property which is at the intersection of 99 and Twin Cities, that appears to be, to be a more logical location for a new interchange. When we look at, you know, something that's going to be over a period of maybe 20 to 30 years to pay for it, to generate the revenue, I think that it's a little bit more, and it's just my opinion, I think it's short-sighted to look at an interchange, the interchange at Walnut, when you don't have a demand now, and the demand even at build-out of the properties in the industrial park, your trip generation is far less than what it is on commercial properties. Now, I haven't seen anything, any studies that staff has done, but, you know, because this was all kind of last minute, but I do have a concern that, that, you know, we're looking at Walnut Avenue rather than I think where the real problem is going to be, is at Twin Cities, and we won't have a funding mechanism, assuming this measure goes through.
Okay, so as part of the TCIP, what we did was, we evaluated the land use. And so we hired a consultant to do, with the city's input and planning's input, with regards to what market absorption would be assumed in a 20-year growth, okay? Given the, given the information from planning of where we have tentative maps that are approved that haven't been moved to construction, and what the city could actually absorb, that's how we came up with the land use. So what we did as part of the TCIP is we looked at existing, you know, existing land use, and then we looked at the 20-year land use and where impacts would be. The commercial that you have to, in the vicinity of Twin Cities, given the number of roof caps we have, there was not the sustainability, and this is my layperson's term as an engineer, explaining the market absorption, et cetera, that the consultant did, the subconsultant to the traffic consultant, did for us, that that wasn't necessarily the place where the land use growth was going to happen. The previous TCIP had a build-out of the city's general plan, okay? And so you had, you had basically the build-out of your roadway system because you had a build-out of land use. We only looked at what was projected to be in the next 20 years and the roadway improvements that were needed for those, that land use to be added.
And I understand that. However, if you look at the horizon on the general plan, and I'm not saying all of the commercial's going to build out, and number one, I haven't seen any of the studies in order to look at it, so I really don't know, you know, what information is contained in there. Did they actually look at then the commercial properties north of Twin Cities or at the Twin Cities interchange?
I'd have to go back to, the TCIP came to city council in June of 2015, and the report was attached to that. I'd have to go back to look at what land use I, my, as I recollect, there was not commercial land use that was proposed to be built out north of Twin Cities in that vicinity.
Well, and, you know, I understand, things are dynamic and they change, and we have changed circumstances north of Twin Cities. I mean, there's a big project that's proposed potentially north of there, who knows what will happen in that immediate vicinity as well over the next 10, 20 years, depending upon what does ultimately build out there. So I think, my concern is that, I think that the interchange at Twin Cities Road, historically, the priorities were C Street, A Street interchange, that's been completed. The second one on the list was Twin Cities Road, and I don't know where that got dropped out versus Walnut Avenue. Walnut Avenue was proposed to be constructed as an interchange back in the late 80s, early 90s.
Early 90s.
City collected money, then refunded the money back to the owners when they decided not to do it, and then it got put back into the CIP, and I understand that, but I still look at, you know, I haven't seen the studies you've looked at, so therefore, it's kind of hard to...
And let me just address Twin Cities in a couple of respects. So with Twin Cities, when it was, when it went through the planning and the traffic analysis process was performing, it was also in a time when the market was much higher with how much land use was being, how many houses were being constructed, et cetera, than currently right now. So my understanding from the consultants is that there was a higher projection of what the traffic would be. Since we went into a recession for that period of time, it basically bought us more than a 10-year period with that. The Twin Cities roundabouts have been analyzed for both with Eastview and also with the TCIP. Both of those, both of those documents, traffic documents, assumed a Walnut Interchange, and with the Walnut Interchange, you have residents, and mostly unassuming residents, that go up to Twin Cities because that's the only way they can get across the freeway to get back and forth, and so they can't necessarily use all the freeway on and off-ramps at Walnut, that when that interchange, the Walnut Interchange, is actually constructed, it draws traffic away from Twin Cities, potentially, not so much, I would say, the Central Galt Interchange until there's some additional connections down to the south that are shown up there. But besides helping the industrial, it does help Twin Cities because traffic that, that's the only way that you can get to southbound if you're going southbound on and off, and you're trying to get to the east side of 99. So there's some of those aspects, and those have been analyzed as part of Eastview and then also the TCIP.
Well, I want to say something which, and this is what's troubling me. It's all well and good, but I think that all of this should have come to city council before a flyer was going out with all this information on it. I mean, I think that's, I think I'm going to use the word rude, because when everybody heard this, it came as a shock to all of us, and I am with Councilmember Campion saying that there are other places that we feel it should have gone first, especially Twin City, when we hear from our constituents. So I'm not in favor of this going out at all, and I think we need to readdress what we think really are the priorities here.
Let me, on behalf of staff and myself, I'll apologize, the buck stops with me.
Well, you know, no offense, but it stopped last week, too, with not getting out all of the work on the water meters, you know? Stuff should come to us first, and I'm, the apologizing is great, but it should come to us first.
And at some point, staff have discussions with the city manager and have some assumption that there's been some dialogue. So Public Works did not bring it to the full council, and I'll apologize again for that. I had some expectation that Jason was conferring when he has one-on-ones with council members as to where this was going. I'm not throwing him under the bus, but there just seems to have been a lack of communication, and I apologize again for that. So we're looking for direction. If this does not seem like the right priority for Galt, then we need to inform SDA to hold off on the Galt mailer, and we need to figure out what additional information that council would like in helping them make a decision, or maybe you're ready tonight to tell us you think Twin Cities interchange next is the priority, or we're happy to try to play catch-up here.
Well, I don't know about the rest of the council, but, you know, my instincts are that Twin Cities makes more sense, but I haven't reviewed anything. I mean, staff hasn't provided us anything to make a, you know, a reasoned decision. I guess, what concerns me is, again, that this kind of comes as, you know, out of left field in that Walnut Avenue interchange has not been discussed at all.
Never.
In years. And to see that it was getting ready to go out in a mailer next week was very concerning. I would like the opportunity to have, you know, assuming this doesn't mess up, and the problem is, you know, we are one small group. I mean, there are nine other jurisdictions involved in this effort, and I don't want Galt to be seen as an obstacle, and that's another part. So it's kind of weighing, do we move forward with what staff has presented so as not to hold up what is really a county-wide effort?
Well, I think it's, when you show up at a meeting with no information on what's even going on in our neck of the woods, that's troubling to me. You know, you go to an SDA meeting and they hand you this and go, "Here, this is what you're doing?"
Yep.
I, I have a real problem with that.
Mayor, let me ask Public Works, what, what are the ramifications if we ask to hold this up and give us an opportunity to look at your studies? I'm thinking, in the transition of city managers, something didn't happen that normally would have happened. So I think that we, as a council, need to be informed, but I would also like to know what happens if we delay it, so we have time to look at studies.
I believe that there is a limited amount of time. The train has not left the station.
Is it already tracking? Is it already tracking?
Just as a point of information, we just received the draft of this ourselves about eight days ago. So it's not like we've been working on this particular flyer. However, we did communicate several months ago to, as they were asking for the types of projects that would be priorities, that that information was given to, say, to STA. So at that point was probably when we should have had an, taken a better opportunity to communicate where we were headed with this. The three pages other than page two are pretty much generic for all communities, and then page two would be sort of customized for each mailing area. So I don't think it would be a problem to have a delayed mailing on the GALT mailer because it's a separate mailer anyway. And so I think if we could probably, maybe we could make some recommendations in a written fashion, and then to you over the next, in two weeks, and maybe put on the next council agenda, you know, additional direction and guidance on preferred priorities. At this point, just to maybe bring back home where we're at with Twin Cities, after the city invested $4 million on the current roundabouts, that was done with the intention of deferring the need for a new north Twin Cities Road alignment, which is still in the general plan. And the thought would be that there is enough capacity there to develop that commercial properties that are contemplated as part of the sphere of influence and the proposed annexation. However, at Walnut, that proposed annexation area for Commercial and Industrial Park to the west has virtually no additional capacity for a significant number of truck traffic. We're already getting complaints on Pringle, we're getting complaints on trucks going down Industrial, going down A Street, going down C Street. So to think that you're going to develop that industrial area without having a Walnut interchange, I don't think you're, I think you have issues getting past the CEQA mitigation of those impacts. Whereas we believe that we have more than 20 years to figure out Twin Cities under our current TCIP planning. It is not, Twin Cities is the new alignment, the next full interchange for Twin Cities is not even contemplated in our 20-year TCIP at this point.
Well, and if they, if we or STA decided to do Twin Cities, then all the work that we've done on the roundabouts, would that be disturbed? It seems like it would be to put an interchange.
To build a full interchange, actually, the interchange needs to be aligned to the north because of spacing, et cetera. Also potentially with Mango interchange going in, if the casino goes in, there's a spacing issue, so it would be realigned to the north. I'd have to look at what was proposed, but my understanding is that potentially the existing Twin Cities might be only serving local traffic, but I'd have to actually look at that, and it would have to be evaluated.
I think there's some really good reasons why staff has come up with the proposal, but I think it would be good if, if we had an opportunity to share that with you. So perhaps then we could delay it to the next meeting if that's not...
Given the discomfort level with the apparent surprise here, I think it would be beneficial for all parties if we could put together some pros and cons and some discussion for you to think about, and then we could bring it back at the next meeting and have further dialogue. Meanwhile, we can communicate with STA that, you know, we need to slow down and make sure our council's comfort with, comfortable with the staff priorities.
Well, another thing.
I was gonna, you're our representative to STA, you know, how do you feel as the representative to STA with our doing this?
Delaying it?
Yes.
I'm okay with it as long as it doesn't jeopardize the entire process. I don't want to, because I think, I think council would like to maybe spend a little time on it and have a better understanding of why we're looking at Walnut, because I don't understand why we're looking at Walnut right now.
Well, and another thing about the half percent sales tax, well, if, even if it comes into fruition, they're not going to start building anything until about 10 or 12 years down the line, and I thought that we said before that those roundabouts were a quick fix, not a permanent fix. Because, you know, trucks are already having a bad time going around the roundabouts because they're smaller than they should be.
It was designed, it was designed at the time for a 10-year life. Given the recession with the development, it'll probably be longer than a 10-year life. There is, there are aprons on the roundabouts, and the purpose of the aprons on the roundabouts, and they're designed this way so that the trucks can go up on them. You do not want to draw, you do not want to design a roundabout that is so wide that a truck can navigate the entire thing without going up on the apron, because then you get these incredibly wide lanes and just, it becomes mayhem for regular drivers, et cetera. So there, that's what the purpose of those aprons are there for the trucks, and when they were designed, they were designed to accommodate not just California legal vehicles, but they also looked at farm equipment because of the fact that there was farm equipment that apparently went back and forth over the roundabouts, and there was some concern about that.
Well, then what I'm saying again is that they're only supposed to last for about 10 years, and we're probably going to not see the first amount of money for at least 10 years, and as I've said before, as Curtis said, from listening to all of my constituents, I know that the main priority for everyone is to get Twin Cities to where it should be.
The other thing is, is I think whatever decision we make, we need to be very comfortable with it, because you can't take, you can't, 10 years down the road decide, oh, well, we really don't need Walnut because it didn't develop around there like we anticipated, let's put the money towards Twin Cities. You can't do that. So whatever decision you make today, I think you'd better be pretty certain about it, because, you know, the voter is the one that's going to look at this and make a decision whether they wish to, you know, add an additional half cent, is this worthwhile? So I think we need to be very certain.
Is this a, is this an action item tonight? I thought it was a presentation.
It's just information.
Quick question, because I, not sure I agree with what Mr. Campion just said. What we're doing at this point is showing them what we want to do with the monies, if the monies are approved.
That's, that's a regional priority for the city if the money is approved. My understanding, whereas Measure A, they had some specific projects identified, and they had carve-outs for them, like Central Vault Interchange had a carve-out for it. My understanding is that there will not be carve-outs, that we will have Measure A, the first, 50% of what we get is used for fix-it-first, and then the rest of it is used for capital improvements, provided you can get to, you can divert some of your fix-it-first to capital improvements if you have over a pavement management index of 70 or greater. So typically what we end up doing a lot with our Measure A is we use it to leverage for grants, et cetera. So that, so it's not necessarily this, it's just, we didn't have a, a project that would be, you know, identified regionally. Those are basically where the yellow and the red are, where the improvements that we have in the, in the current TCIP. So we were looking for a project that was a little bit more regional in identification to say, this is, this is the city's, one of the city's priorities. Some of the agencies actually identified, we're planning on doing pavement rehab on A, B, and C Street. We just don't have that same type of depth of how much money we get, because we currently get about a million dollars a year, and there's only so much you can do with a million dollars a year. Not going to build an interchange with a million dollars a year. Basically what it'll do, it will help, you know, your process of when you're going for matching funds and your developer funds, et cetera. And so for Measure A, we did use some of Measure, well, clearly there were set-asides for the Central Vault Interchange.
Right.
But we also used some Measure A for Twin Cities for overruns that we didn't necessarily had budgeted for before we finished the plans and put it out to bed. So it's not specifically identified that money will be used for the Walnut interchange. We could get incredibly lucky and have a windfall of grants that we may not use Measure A for the Walnut interchange, so it doesn't have to be used specifically for the Walnut interchange.
My understanding was that it was, it was similar along the lines as Measure A, where they did have carve-outs. So I wasn't aware that this is not a carve-out project.
My, my understanding is they're not having specific carve-out.
Yeah. I haven't been told either way.
Yeah, so my understanding from the meetings that I've attended is that this is, you know, this is basically used to get the voters to understand what the purpose of, you know, Measure A next is, and what are the potential projects that actually can be constructed if, if it's approved.
So at this point, it's a focal point for the voters so they can see what the potential is?
Correct, correct. We have not seen the actual polling language.
Right.
Yet, because they're still in the process of that, and there's an art to it. So that's, like I said, my understanding is there's not specifically carve-outs for this project, that project. It doesn't mean that they might not get to that, but there has not been talk about having carve-outs at this time.
Well, then, why don't they just have on the brochure adding things that, an enter, a new interchange, not just putting that specific interchange in there, then why don't they have verbiage that says, you know, kind of like, depending on, there's, because you've got lists here of stuff you're going to do, so for a planned project, why don't you put additional interchange? Instead of putting that it's at Walnut?
So basically what we have is, we have the improvements A, B, and C, which have been constructed already. D and E are the Central Vault corridor projects that we were going to have as completed, but with funding, we're not sure if it's going to be complete, well, it's probably going to be starting in 2017, so I had them change it because it wouldn't be completed by the time this went out, and that's why they said planned projects, because it's eminent that it's coming. And then the Walnut interchange was, and these are, the ones A through E are identified as a current Measure A of how we are, how we spend our current Measure A. The Walnut interchange, the priority, was identified of how we could spend our Measure B, our Measure Next, Measure A Next funds.
Okay. So, council, I'm assuming we want to have Public Works come back to us with a little more detail?
I just have a question. So the Eastview plan, does it use Twin Cities or Walnut as the main artery? I mean, when I reviewed it, I think at least Walnut is a two-lane road, correct?
Yeah, so basically what happens is, we did the TCIP and the traffic for Eastview concurrently, okay? And so the 20, 20-year land use projection is the same for both traffic impact studies, okay? So we did the TCIP, the TCIP basically, well, it was kind of neck and neck. So basically from the TCIP, we got the improvements that are identified for the 20-year TCIP, and those were assumed improvements for Eastview. So Walnut through the actual Eastview project is a two-lane road per the general plan. It doesn't meet, the volume, the projected volumes do not warrant a four-lane road through there, but that doesn't mean that, once the Walnut interchange is in, that if somebody's going to a Walnut interchange, they wouldn't take the existing Walnut, that's four lanes to get to a new and improved full interchange at Walnut. So there will be potentially, and that's what I was trying to...
Well, I guess that's my concern, is that when evaluating whether it should be Twin Cities or Walnut, if there was a Walnut interchange or Walnut overpass, I think that's where people, you know, the 5,000 residents of the, of Eastview or the 1,200 homes would be using that road, and when I look at it, it doesn't look like that's, it's looked to just be a two-lane road, not...
Well, okay, so Walnut in turn, in, internal to Eastview is a collector, so what it does is it collects all the traffic and puts it out to the, to the arterial. The arterial being Marengo, and then Walnut west of Marengo is also an arterial. That, the, that section of Walnut, basically between East Stockton and Marengo, four-lane road, we always have issues of people complaining about speeds, et cetera. Not so much volumes right now, because the volumes are relatively low, but that is designed as an arterial, and it'll feed right into the future Walnut interchange.
So just to maybe try to wrap in lay terms an answer to that question, when you do traffic studies, there's, they're an art with science backing them up. They look at if the trips are headed south, that they're likely to take Walnut, and they have to then guess how many of the trips are likely to head south based on where the businesses are and where traffic patterns are today. And then they look at, and anything going north is not, why would you go north to go south, and why would you go south to go north? So they typically come up with splits, and then they run them through the model, and they figure out where the congestion is, and that sort of starts to drive where the needs for intersection improvement, signals, extra lanes, and out of that spins sort of your improvements that will be needed to meet a 20-year projection based on some assumed amount of growth in the city. And you're always guessing at where that growth might be based on market studies and other things.
Eastview was taken into account. But at Walnut, there have been complaints already about the speed and the traffic down Walnut, so I don't know if putting an intersection there is going to help with that, because of the school crossing halfway down there where the fire department is.
So what's your pleasure, council?
I'd like to have staff bring something back.
Okay. Is that, we in agreement on that? Okay.
We'll do so.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, we've already had the public comment read, so we'll move straight into it. We have Tracy Gross.
Hi, my name's Tracy Gross. I live on Sunset Drive here in Galt. I just wanted to come and talk about subdivisions that are being approved now and looked at in the future, little or big ones, and the issue of water. And I hope that you guys have really taken a really hard look at water, because it's going to affect those of us that already live here. And California, Northern California is still in the middle of a really severe drought. Water tables do drop. A few months of waiting does not replenish and does not get us out of a drought situation. You can't predict where we're going from here, and we all know that, ones of us that have been around here forever, that we've been through a few droughts, and this is probably the worst one we've had. And so I get a little nervous when I see all the things that are being looked at with GALT, and I just want to make sure that you guys are really taking a hard look on the water, and if we're going to be able to maintain what we have now, and if we're going to be able to supply to the new places that you're looking at growing, and, you know, can you get a permit if you decide you want to drill another well? Because there are counties in Sacramento that have actually not allowed permits to be pulled at all. So all I'm asking is that you get that in your brain and look at it as you guys are looking at the growth that you guys are looking at moving forward, okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chanelle Murray?
Good evening to the residents. My name is Chanelle Murray. I represent Assemblymember Jim Cooper, and I'm just here today to address the council and the residents and just let them, let you all know the services that our office provides. Our office is located, main office is, district office, excuse me, is located in Elk Grove, 9250 Laguna Springs, right off of Laguna 99. But we do hold a mobile office hours here at the Galt Flea Market the second Wednesday of every month from 10 to noon. We also have an upcoming event on April 18th at the Littleton Center. This is going to be called a Senior Scam Stopper Workshop. The intended presenters will be Contractor State License Board, the Bureau of Automotive Repair, the Department of Insurance, and possibly the SAC DA to come out and talk to seniors about recent scams that have been coming up and ways to just prevent them from falling victim to those things. I will leave some of my business cards here if anyone has any questions or would like to get in contact with our office. We definitely want to hear from the residents and definitely from the council for your needs of the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Powers. Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. We have unanimous vote.
Before we move on, could I introduce our new student representative? You don't have to speak, but if you would stand up, this is our new student representative to the youth commission that we just voted on in the consent calendar. So we look forward to working with you. You've worked with us already, so I know you do a great job. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Moving on to scheduled matters. Cedar Flats Estates Rezone Investing Tentative Subdivision Map Project. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Chris Arias, our principal planner, will go ahead and give the presentation this evening.
Good evening. Chris Arias, Principal Planner with the city's Community Development Department. The item we have before you is the Cedar Flats Estates Rezone Investing Tentative Subdivision Map Project. The project is located east of Highway 99, north of the Ionesburg Railroad tracks, and south of Dead Man's Gulch. The site is owned R1C in open space with a requested planned development rezone. The proposal is to subdivide 30 acres into 120 single-family lots, and they range in size from 6,510 square feet to 9,410 square feet. There are three approved maps for the site. There are Lonnie Estates of Four Seasons and the Village at Lexington Heights. The map on the screen shows the location of each of the approved maps, and I also attached the actual maps themselves, I think as Attachment 3, to the staff report. The approved maps total 102 lots. The proposed project is 120, so it's obviously an increase of 18 units over the approved maps. The project includes dedicating land for detention basin and open space. It also includes building a bridge connecting the subdivision on the north side of Dead Man's Gulch to the Cedar Flats Estates project. And there's also a Class 1 Recreation Trail on the northeast and south side of the project site. A portion of the site is being proposed as a private community, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project at its meeting in January. The project requires certifying the CEQA document, a rezone, and the approval of the vesting tentative subdivision map. A vesting map allows the right to proceed with development in substantial compliance with the ordinance's policies and standards in effect at the time the vesting map was approved. The rezone changes the site from R1C to Cedar Flats Estates Plan Development. The R1C zone requires 6,500-square-foot lot minimum requirements, which again is, this project is meeting the minimum requirement for lot sizes, but is requesting the PD because some of the lot wisps don't meet the 65-foot width requirement at the street front. The lot wisps range from 51 feet to 121 feet, and the lots with the 51-foot width are located in Area A, which I'll go over in a minute. The other lots outside the Area A all meet the 65-foot requirement or are really close to it. The rezone request is consistent with the general plan. The density of the proposed project is four units per acre, and that's consistent with the land use for the site, the low density, which is zero to six units per acre. The project is also consistent with the Northeast Area Specific Plan designations. Areas B and C, the old Lonnie Estates and a portion of the Village at Lexington Heights, are in the Northeast Area Specific Plan area, and the other parts are not in it. As mentioned, it's a vesting tentative map request to subdivide this property into 120 single-family lots. The findings to approve the vesting map are shown on pages 8 through 12 in the Planning Commission's staff report. Main access, oops. Main access to the site, if you start from the south, is extending Amador Avenue east into the project site. Also, Ayers Lane will be extended east, and Lionia Drive will be extended east. I've also talked about that the bridge on Cedar Flat Avenue will connect River Oaks 1 to the subdivision, so the applicant is conditioned to build this bridge connecting the subdivision to the north. There's a Class 1 Recreation Trail that's going to be built, basically almost bordering the project site to the north, east, and south. And again, this Area A will be served, will be a private gated community. Gates will be at the streets entering the site, and as part of this, there will be a block wall separating the homes in Area 1 with Cedar Flat Drive with then some landscape median also on that. There's a non-participating property, it's like, kind of in the center of this project, so the project basically moves right around it. The streets are in a north-south, east-west alignment, so it makes for a nice grid pattern type of development. Area E, we've kind of had a little bit of trouble with identifying some of the areas to be dedicated, and Area E is basically detention basin that is located right here. Area F is the open space adjacent to the gulch, and Lot H is the landscape median along Lionia Drive. Lot I is the landscape median along Cedar Flat, and then, and actually Lot A's, or Lot I is also the bike trail that runs along the subdivision. And then Lot J is actually considered a private streets in the subdivision. Those lettered lots are not shown in the subdivision map, but we are going to add a condition to further identify those lots, so there will be no confusion in the future. There's no, well, there's the standard conditions of approval for this project, they're Exhibit B of the staff report. There is no park dedication as part of this, so they condition the pay and roof fee and then Quimby fees. There's no identified home builder at this time, so there's no architecture tied to the project, but it should be noted that all architecture must be approved by the Planning Commission at a notice public hearing. So, when builders are identified, they'll go to Planning Commission for approval. A CEQA initial study mitigating net debt was prepared for the project. It was circulated for public review. We received comments from Caltrans, the Galt Joint Unit Elementary School District, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the State Water Board, and SMUD. The CEQA section of the Planning Commission's staff report addresses their comments in And that concludes staff presentation. The City Council is asked to consider the resolution approving the CEQA document and vesting tentative subdivision map, as well as considering, or consider introducing the ordinance approving the rezone. And again, that concludes staff presentation. Staff and the applicant will be here to answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Questions from Council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I know, Chris, you just mentioned that the Commission would be approving the building elevations, and I believe that's referenced under Condition A14, but it doesn't give any timing. I mean, I mean, there's no timing. It just says that it'll happen, but it didn't say when it's going to happen or before what. So, obviously, it's going to be before building permit issuance.
Correct. Well, before construction. We can further identify that as part of their approval for final map, but it is just assumed that before they go to build, they will have to have that architecture approved.
Okay. The, then I was looking at your, and there's a couple of conditions on this that are somewhat confusing. It talks on Condition B1 on page 4. It says the applicant shall submit a final map based upon Phil's survey by licensed surveyor or registered civil, and must record the final map prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. That implies to me that they've already gotten a building permit before they got the final map. So, you can't get a building permit until you've got a final map, though, correct?
That is correct.
So, is this just a, because you have to have the lot created, and you've got to have streets to it?
That's still right.
So, I mean, it's-
Well, that's an old standard condition that really needs to be updated. We've noticed a few others similar, where, sort of, we've always done it that way, but-
It's never been done that way. You would never-
What I'm saying is that wording on that condition has been in existence for quite a while, and I noticed the same thing as I was rereading these earlier today, and there's a couple others that probably need to be updated with current practice.
And I would agree. I mean, that's a standard condition that is basically in our template and should be removed. And there are a couple others as well.
On the, on Condition 16B, page 7, it says sidewalks will be constructed as determined by the city engineer. I think I've read elsewhere where it's to be done by city standards, and I would think that it would be city standards rather than just the city engineer.
Correct.
So, that's, okay, matter of clarification. On 17, or Condition B17, it talks about, again, the Cedar Flat Bridge, but when will that be constructed?
Then, prior to final map approval.
Prior to final map approval.
Correct. Unless there is some other agreement to delay construction of that, which would then have to come before City Council.
On, just to make sure we're clear, typically the subdivider would enter into a subdivision agreement, which would give them up to one year if they bond improvements, so it may not be prior to final map recordation.
Correct.
But would be required within a year thereafter with bonding.
As long as it's been bonded, payment and performance. From the bonding.
Yes.
Because, yeah. On the, this is Condition Number B30E. It says, "Building permits may be issued during construction of improvements, but occupancy will not be allowed until acceptance of improvements unless otherwise allowed by the city engineer." And I know it's somewhat vague, but if you, if you've got homes being constructed, and I don't know what improvements are going to be done, I mean, if you don't have water to the site and you've got combustibles on site, I would think the, the fire district would have issues with that. I mean, I mean, it's a very vague condition.
I would agree. I think it's another of those standard conditions, and it's just been rolled over and perhaps not vetted properly.
So, would that be, would that be deleted, then?
Well, maybe I could help a little bit. Typically, the CSD Fire Department, we would require that there at a minimum be all-weather roads, which could be gravel during construction, but that you don't occupy the homes till the streets are done. So, as long as there's ingress and egress, fire hydrants available, they would typically allow building permits, and they have to sign off on each building permit, so they'd get a case-by-case review of whether there was sufficient all-weather access at least 20 feet wide for their fire trucks during construction.
And we do, we do allow the construction of model homes before-
Right.
-improvement, so there is the potential for that to happen prior to all improvements being completed.
Okay. As I recall, we used to have, you would have the all-weather road, and you'd have sufficient water supply and so forth, but as long as that is what is actually the practice, then that's, that's probably fine. The next question was on B36, which regarding annexation, that was on page 11. It says, "All required annexation shall occur, and all required maintenance districts shall be formed and bonded prior to map recordation or, as indicated in the subdivision improvement agreement." And I guess I'm not sure what, what this other option is, and I don't know, maybe I should look to the city attorney, because I would think you would want to have whatever the election is before you record your map.
So, at the time that the final map is brought forward for recordation, if the applicant is proposing any improvements be deferred, or if the formation of the maintenance district is going to be deferred, that would be in a subdivision improvement agreement that would be presented to the Council at the time that the final map came back for approval. So, you would be able to decide at the time that the final map came to you whether or not you were comfortable with the deferral of the formation of the maintenance district?
Why would we want to defer the formation of the district and allow the recordation of a map? That's what I'm reading into this. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
So, you would have the option to do it. If you don't, if you don't want there to be the option, then-
Okay.
-that, that provision could be deleted from, from B36, but if you leave it as an option in B36, it doesn't compel you to include it in a subdivision improvement agreement if that's not your desire at the time the final map comes, comes to, comes to you for recordation.
But what is the mechanism? I guess I don't understand. By putting it in a subdivision agreement, if you, if you didn't have the annexation completed prior to the recordation? I guess I don't understand. It says prior to, or as indicated in the subdivision improvement agreement. It says, "The, the district has to be formed before recordation," but then it looks as though there's something that it would allow for something different in, in a subdivision improvement agreement, which doesn't make sense to me.
Did you ask staff about this first, so we can look it up?
I talked briefly with Chris earlier this afternoon.
Yeah. I think that's one we ought to add to the list to revise. Typically, the subdivision improvement agreement deals just with that, with subdivision improvements, and so it is kind of peculiar to be talking about deferral of annexations and deferral of maintenance districts in the subdivision improvement agreement.
Because it, the, because when you go to the next page and it talks about the CFD, it says it has to be prior to recordation of the final map. This has to happen. Which makes sense.
It's probably, again, it's, it's standard language that I understand has been used for years here in Galt. It's probably related to a financing mechanism, and those are typically internal to the subdivision. We're not talking about annexations to the city. We'd be talking about-
Annexation to Melrose District, Lighting Landscape District.
Or a CSD.
CSD, yeah, correct.
So, you'd have the option to give them a little more time if they, you know, otherwise-
But I don't understa, how would, mechanically, that's what I don't understand how it works.
I'm trying to think of an example where you'd want to do that, and I can't.
Yeah, okay. And I guess, the, I guess my, my biggest issue is, and I understand that this is a vesting tentative map, but nowhere in here, in any of the conditions do we talk about fees, and I talked with the staff earlier today. If, in the event that the city establishes a fee, or in this case, if we have any increases in fees, these, this development would not have to pay any increase in fee. And I, I guess I, as a matter of equity with all other developments in the community, I think that this subdivision, like all others, should pay for, you know, if there's a cost of living adjustment, they should have to pay that fee. If there is a new fee that is applied to all new development, I think they should pay that fee. And I know you can't put it as a condition of approval, but I know in the past, this city has conditionally rezoned property. This is a rezone. So, those types of conditions, if the Council is inclined, could, I believe, condition it to where this development would be like all others and pay the same amount of fee as any other subdivision in the city, and I think it's a matter of equity. They still end up with vested rights in other areas with this subdivision map, but I don't think that the burden of costs should be shifted simply because we have a tentative map, a vesting tentative subdivision map. And that's really for discussion.
Based on our conversation, I found one of the other conditions that, oops. No, it's not out there. But at any rate, I saw some of the conditions on some of the older maps where you, where we had done that. We had, we had the language basically requesting that they pay, you know, the fees at the time of development, and so they weren't vesting in the fees. So, that is correct, but we didn't carry that forward into this, into this project.
Right.
So, I think there's two options to deal with that situation. First of all is to actually add a condition to the rezone, where you enter into what's called a rezone agreement, and it's not a device that's used by too many communities, but it is an option in order to add conditions to rezones. The second option, which is a little bit easier, is to actually make it a condition of the map with the applicant's-
Agreement.
Agreement on the record. So, you know, I think there's going to be some cleanup on these conditions that are going to have to occur before the Council acts on the tentative subdivision map, because once the map is approved, then, then the game's over.
Right.
You can't clean up the conditions post-approval. So, I think that's a condition that we could bring back for the Council's consideration and the applicant's hopefully agreement to that condition on the record.
So, if in fact it is a template, we can just get it over with, so we don't have to go through this every time we have a meeting.
Well, yeah.
It needs to be fixed.
Yeah. The, the other thing is, is, you know, and this is for Council to consider, and it can be included as part of the, the rezone or, or a condition if the applicant agrees, is, you know, you know, laws change. We have new requirements put on us. When I say us, I mean the city, and we have to respond to changing conditions all the time. One of the other, you know, ramifications of a vesting tentative map is that they vest all policies and procedures in effect at the time the map is done. I think that there should be leeway for the city to impose, if it is imposed across the board, to everyone else, the opportunity on new policies and procedures as it relates to development. I just, and, and we've done that in the past as well. So, I'm not saying it's, this isn't anything new, but I think it's something that hasn't been discussed, at least in the context of this vesting map, but I think the Council should be made aware of it, that, you know, I think that, in all fairness, all developments should be the same.
You know, we haven't had the time to review that with the applicant as well.
Sure. And I understand that. I understand that.
They're signed off on that as well.
Right, right. Well, I have, you know, I can't sit here and talk to Council members and tell them what I'm thinking either, so that's why it has to be at an open meeting.
Any further questions?
But like you said, there's a lot of conditions to be changed in the works.
And I think with those issues, the subdivision map and the design, I think is fine, but it was mainly the conditions and so forth. So, do we need to continue this?
Do we need to continue this meeting? Does that, continue this item?
So, well, what I would suggest, in order to allow us to continue to make progress on the project, and subject, of course, to the public hearing, which we haven't done yet, is if you look at the- is if you look at the resolution on the recommendation, it's to approve the initial study mitigated neg deck and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So one thing the council could do tonight is take that action, delete the part about approving the vesting map project, and then introduce the ordinance this evening. And then, at the next meeting, we could bring back the rezone for adoption, and also bring back a separate resolution approving the vested map with the cleanup condition.
Assuming that the conditions are acceptable, so that would be the easiest way. That's correct. Okay, okay. I would so move, wait.
Before you make your motion, we have public comment.
Public care.
Timothy Starkweather.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members, staff. My name's Dr. Timothy Starkweather. First of all, I want to compliment staff. We've not rushed a judgment on this project. We've been working diligently on this for about two years. During that time, I've come to respect your planning staff and your city engineering staff, which have held me to an extremely high standard. They updated some of the regulations and they made us basically go back five or six steps, bring it back up to the current standard. So they have not given us an easy path. They've challenged us to do a good job, and we've tried to respect their wishes. Relative to the items that Councilmember Kurt brought up, I yield to all those points. I think they're very good points. I think that as long as we're treated equitably and no different, and we're not put in at a disadvantage, we should pay whatever the fees are at such time as the final map. That actually also encourages us to go like the dickens-
To get it up.
Record that map.
That's right.
Because right now, your fees are quite reasonable. And if they do go up, and we have delayed because of market conditions or other reasons, you know, that's, as long as we're treated equally to other developers, I see no penalty. I don't think that we're prejudiced in any way. So the tentative map, the vesting tentative map's important, but we fully recognize and understand that if fees adjust during the time between the vesting tentative map and the recorded final map, that we would be equitably treated and that the city would be equitably treated, and there could be some slight increase tied to cost of living or a new item that wasn't factored. For example, your whole discussion about arterial infrastructure. I mean, there could be an impact fee that you guys simply don't know this second about, and it will come up, and you're going to come to us and you're going to say you're going to have certain trip count that we didn't anticipate, and now you're going to have to participate. We respect that process. Same with your schools, the same with your parks, et cetera. Because one of the reasons people are going to want to live here is because you've got good schools, they're going to have good parks, et cetera. So, you know, we're only going to benefit if these things do exist, and we should pay our fair share.
Thank you.
Relative to the tentative map, I do appreciate the city attorney's comments. I would like, respectfully, that we get as much done tonight as possible. We do understand that you're going to do some wordsmithing on a couple of the items. They were outlined by Kurt very well, and we yield to them with that wordsmithing. And if we could be scheduled for the next city council meeting, we can actually get this done. Now, we have identified a potential builder. Candidly, the community of Gault, because of all kinds of wonderful reasons, is becoming more desirable, and builders are now, you know, quite attracted to our project. We're very pleased with that, because what we've tried to do with this project is actually anticipate a family-orienteded community, but with several different price points. Again, if you have 120-house subdivision, and every single house is the same, it's like going into an ice cream parlor and there's only vanilla. Well, not everybody likes vanilla. They want maybe some strawberry. So, you know, what we've tried to do, and we thank staff for being so cooperative with us, is create a palette of options for the consumers. And we think that'll increase our absorption, and we think it'll attract a lot of wonderful families to your community. And we're very excited about that. Do you have any questions at me?
No. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And we will-
Good-looking project.
We will communicate with staff weeks before we intend to do anything, and we will do nothing without permits. So that means that staff will be fully cognizant of everything we're doing. And so that way, if there's an issue on site, we'll be happy to respect that. I'll sit down.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Nice-looking project. With that, since this is-
The neighborhood, can you get him to say something?
Francie, give me half a second.
Good evening.
No, seriously, give me half a second. Since this is under scheduled matters, we need to open the public hearing so we can hear you. Okay? So at this point, the public hearing is now open. You're off.
I reside in the neighborhood adjacent to this big empty lot that this proposed subdivision is going to. There was a proposed subdivision a few years back of apartments and condos going in that area, and I stood up at that time and adamantly said, "We don't want that in our neighborhood." This new subdivision, I know the owner of the property, I've discussed things with him on several occasions. I had an issue with one street name, but I've talked to the planning department, and that's been corrected. I've spoken to six or seven of my neighbors, and they're all for anything going in there that will improve our property value, the scenery, and the lack of dust flying in the air year-round. Thank you, members of council, city, and public.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any other further public comment? Seeing none, and our public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion from council?
I recommend that we do it in two separate motions. The first motion would be to adopt the resolution approving the initial study mitigated negative declaration and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Second motion would be to introduce the ordinance approving the proposed rezone for the Cedar Flats Estates Project, wait full reading, and continue the next, to the next regular meeting for adoption, which would include action on the vesting tentative subdivision map.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Vice Mayor Payne. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Moving on to the regular calendar, Treasurer's Office. Treasurer's report for the period ending December 2015.
Thank you. First, I just want to address Councilmember Campion. I hope he didn't scrutinize my treasurer's report as much as he did the last agenda item. Anyway, I'm here to report the two, the second quarter of the fiscal year, and kind of giving it up-to-date as far as what's happened in the investment world for the city. First, I want to say, as if you recall, the Federal Reserve raised their federal funds rate. And what that means to the City of Gault is that the LAF rate, which lags about 60 days behind the federal funds rate, did increase, and it increased to .4. Not a lot, but it did increase about 16 basis points. I expect it to go just a few basis points higher. During the second fiscal quarter, I also watched two callable step-up agencies, which are both five years, but they will not go to maturity, just because they'll step up and they'll be called by, let's see, they're both Freddie Mac agencies, so those will both be called. And lastly, we have investments in six different things. For the public's knowledge, we have our Farmers and Merchants Checking Account. We have funds in the State of California LAF account. The, we have a money market at Farmers and Merchants, a CD that matures September 14th of this year, also at Farmers and Merchants. We have non-local CDs, so those are CDs that I've purchased throughout the country, both two- and three-year maturities, and the government agencies that I had set. Collectively, we have a weighted average yield of .63 for ending December 2015. With that, I ask for council's acceptance of the treasurer's report for December.
I accept.
Thank you.
Move for acceptance.
Motion by Councilmember Campion.
I'm sure. Why not?
No questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Second by Vice Mayor Payne. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. You got off easy.
I did. Thank you very much.
Moving on to fiscal year-end, 2016, second quarter update. Mr. Lucido.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. We're going to get fired up here on our presentation. So, but tonight I'll be presenting to you the financial update for the City of Gault through the second quarter, the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. Each of you should have a pamphlet in front of you, which we put together. It's our first run at a new format. We're going to get to you, and we're going to improve as we go along. It's a lot of fun to put together, so hopefully you enjoy the information. But did you find it up there, Steve? Second to last file in my folder. There we go. Okay. So tonight, what we'll do is we're going to focus on the general fund, the Culture Recreation Fund, the Cities Enterprise Funds, and any funds that had annual activity outside of our budgeted projections. In the presentation tonight, and also on your pamphlet, you will have different schedules that contain budget and actual amounts. Just to, for some clarification, is that all the budget amounts include all prior care forwards, budget transfers, and approved special appropriations. And all the expenditures and expenses also include encumbrances, so it is not a cash basis. They do include things that we have contracts and are going to be incurring expenditures throughout the year. And as we look at the analysis in general, since we're halfway through the year, revenues and expenditures should be approximately 50% of the budgeted projections. So for the general fund, as you can see here, our revenues for the year-to-date are at 23% of projections, and I'm going to go into that in a little more detail on the next slide. Expenditures right in line, about 59% of annual expectations, and our other source and users or transfers and abatements are about 30%. Those will all get trued up at year-end, so those are actually on pace to meet projections. What I want to focus on, though, is, in the general fund for the revenues, as I just mentioned, we're about 23% of year-to-date. There are 10 revenues that actually, if you take our top 10 revenues, it equals about 89% of our total general fund revenue. So I want to make sure that we're focusing on the important components here. And I want to just point a few things out. As you can see right off the bat there, the property taxes right now are at 0%, and that might look alarming at starting, but it's not. We receive our first property tax distribution in December, in late December, but we actually record that in quarter three, because the information that we get from the county actually comes in right around New Year's. So it actually gets recorded in Q3. And this year, the first receipt was $907,000, which is actually about an 8% increase from last year, and is in line with the budget projection. I do, I am cautiously optimistic that we are going to meet that, the $4.2 million estimate. Our sales and use tax right now, we're about 36% of budget. Again, cautiously optimistic, we're going to meet our projections there. One thing about sales taxes, they are about two months in arrears, so amounts that are collected in July, we don't receive until September, so that's why it's only about 36%. But if you look at year-over-year, we're about 17% increase from 2015. So that's on the, looking pretty good at this point. Next is our other financing sources and uses. You'll see we're at 60% of budget for the year. This is, this represents our administrative fees from, for the successor agency, the RDA, it's $250,000, plus a loan repayment of the citywide capital acquisition fund. We're going to get 100% of that, so we're going to see that. Next, we have our franchise fees. We're only 17% for the year, but that's expected. We don't receive those till the fourth quarter. We have no reason to believe that we're not going to meet that. License permits, we're online. CDBG, 31%. CDBG revenues, we actually recognize those as we incur qualifying expenditures for reimbursement. So it's a reimbursement program. If we spend the money, we will receive them. The rents for the regional law enforcement training center, that is a little low right now. We did have a delay in the finishing of the construction of that, so we're going to look at that revenue at budget time and the anticipation of what we're going to receive there. TOT, we're right on line there. We're going to receive the amounts from our operators through the year. We're, no indication that we're going to fall short there. Engineering, we're okay. Plan check fees, those are all time-related, when we have plans to be checked. If you look at the expenditures for the general fund by type, our personnel services are right on line. We're at 50%, right where we expected to be. The next two items, the MNO and capital outlay, are both at 76%, and that is expected, because in particular in the MNO, we have $1.1 million that we had to pay to the DOF, which obviously is a huge chunk of our budget this year. We also have some large encumbrances, one of which is, we actually have a large fuel contract that we've encumbered that we will be incurring costs throughout the year, and we'll be billing out to other funds as we incur them. For capital outlay, the reasonable 76% is from the completion of the training center. If you look at our expenditures by department, you can see we're right in line with all our expectations. City council, the budget's over a little bit at this point, but just because we had our improvements to the chambers, which is expected. And then the non-departmental looks a little awkward, seeing 99%, but again, that is primarily because that encumbrance for that fuel contract, we will be within budget by year-end. Moving on to the Culture Recreation Fund, you can see here, from our revenues and expenditures, they are in line with expectations. Our other sources and uses, we're at 100% of 7%, but that's just because we haven't transferred the monies in at the end of the year to balance out the fund from the general fund, so that will come back in alignment. Don't anticipate any issues there. If you look at the expenditures by type, our personnel services, MNO, capital outlay, are all right in line with expectations, so nothing to be alarmed in that area. If you look at the Culture Recreation by department, again, everything looks pretty close in line. Recreation, we have a little more expenditures, but that's actually a good thing. We've had a little more need for special instructors because of the popular events, food concessions for snack bar for tournaments we've been hosting. All those are recoverable with program fees. Mark's a little over with some payroll, but nothing completely out of line. Moving on to the enterprise funds, our stormwater fund.
What is the Boys and Girls Club?
I was just going to ask that.
We don't have one.
Go back. Boys and Girls Club.
I'm not sure why that's on there. Only thing I can think it's referencing is the ACES program that we currently, after-school program that we work in conjunction with the school district with. It was a program that was taken from the Boys and Girls Club and may not have been updated on the name chart from where they're using it. The $57,000 looks about right. It's reimbursed by the school district to the city on a quarterly basis.
And I'll go ahead and update that in future presentations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the enterprise funds. For our stormwater, our revenue and expenses are in line with our budget projections. Again, the other source of usements are abatements that will be transferred throughout the year, in particular from fund to our gas tax to balance that fund. Again, nothing out of the ordinary. Water fund, same thing. We are in line with expectations. Our expenses are a little lower as, from an annualized perspective, but that's primarily from water conservation efforts and going through the wintertime where demand is less, so it costs less to operate the facilities. Waste water, this is one point, one thing out here. The revenues, actually, our revenues, if you look at our charges to our customers, those are right in line where they should be. In this revenue line item, we actually budget the receipt of our loan proceeds for the State Water Resource Control Board. So basically, we advanced funded the cash for the wastewater treatment plan, and we received the loan proceeds subsequent to disbursement, and that is in that line item in which we have received the first installment this last month. So that's why it looks a little weird, but as far as if you break that out into the charges to our customers, we are at about 51% for the year. Northeast Lighting and Landscaping, revenues are 2%. That looks a little weird. That looks a little weird. That's also because our property taxes, which we received in late December and record in Jan, in Q3, but we are in line there. And our MNO and is high to date at this point and that's heating, lighting, power costs. Mostly, it's been dark. Lastly, go over Measure R and actually, everything is in line in Measure R. The only thing I wanted to bring to your attention, in our last quarterly update, we mentioned to you that we did have a recording error of the retro pay for our police officers that was approved in 2015 and budgeted to be paid out of Measure R. We inadvertently recorded that in the general fund and we have made the correction as we told you we would and that's what that represented. But I want to make sure that we put that on a separate line so it didn't get commingled with current year operations and that's what that $76,411 is. Other than that, everything is actually in line. The MNO, it's 68% of budget, that actually includes a large encumbrance. So if you take out that encumbrance there, everything's right back in line. So that concludes my brief presentation. Want to leave it open for any further questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council?
No, but this is nice.
I like it.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, this is informational only. So thank you very much, sir. Moving on to Public Works. Vacation easements and transfer of property interests to the State of California related to the Central Galt Interchange Project.
All right, bear with me just one moment. We'll get that slide presentation up and the handouts coming around to accompany that. So while the slides are coming up, Mr. Mayor and council members, this item is actually recommending three actions for your approval tonight. First would be to make a finding that various utility easements have not been utilized for their intended purposes for a period of five consecutive years. These would be on properties that were acquired for the Central Galt Interchange, to which we're not providing those utility services and have not for over five years since the project acquired those properties. Second item would ask that you adopt a resolution of summary vacation. That's not sending us on a trip. That is a legal term for a streamlined method of getting rid of property or ceasing your interest in those properties. So we're asking for that summary process to be used to get rid of those easements and turn those over to the Department of Transportation. And lastly, that you, we have some time pressure to close this project out, to not lose eligibility for several hundred thousand dollars in final Caltrans funding. And if the project becomes inactive, then we lose that eligibility. And we've been working feverishly to jump through the many hoops that have been put in front of this project to get the right-of-way accepted and we're down to the point where we have to turn over 15 properties or interests in those properties for portions of parcels to the State of California Department of Transportation, also known as Caltrans, to get them to accept the project and then release the remaining several hundred thousand dollars. So that's what we're asking you to consider tonight and Gwen Owens will be giving you a quick overview of what this is all about.
Okay, so briefly, as part of the Central Galt Interchange, we had to purchase property to be able to construct the improvements. There were 34 parcels and 17 permanent and temporary easements that were acquired during this process. There are 15 parcels that actually need to be dedicated to Caltrans, transferred over to Caltrans. This is a requirement of the agreements we signed. The land in purple actually shows the locations of the property that is to be transferred to Caltrans. And as part of transferring the property to Caltrans, we need to provide a clean title. What a clean title is, is basically if there are certain easements on them, Caltrans wants the easements to be removed. So on this exhibit, it's a little bit small, that green area is basically an easement for water pipes and incidental purposes that was actually used for the parcel adjacent to it, which we actually purchased. And when we purchased it and we removed, removed the houses, relocated the residents, et cetera, that easement is no longer in use. The other two easements, there are two different drainage easements that are shown in the green. One is on the left to sort of the bottom and the other one is shown all the way around the corner. Those are basically drain easements that were to the city and were used as part of when we, the previous interchange that was there. So basically, what we're asking city council to do is to vacate, do a summary vacations for those three easements and then to give the Public Works Director the authority to transfer the property to Caltrans. The reason why we're doing this concurrently as opposed to two different steps is that right-of-way has been a very long, arduous process for us to get through. We, we, the city staff cannot do our final paperwork to Caltrans to be able to, until we complete right-of-way and we have approximately $200,000 that's outstanding that we cannot bill until, or get reimbursed for until we actually do our final paperwork. So we have to complete the right-of-way portion, have Caltrans right-of-way certify it, then submit the final billing. This has just been one step in multiple steps that we've actually worked with Caltrans through with regarding the right-of-way. And with that, I conclude my presentation and available for any questions.
Questions from council?
Move staff recommendation?
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Powers. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Moving on to Communications. Do we have any?
No.
No. City Clerk's Report. Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentor Appointment.
Yes, Councilmember Hewer appointed Tony Regina and he submitted a letter of resignation to the city clerk's office on January 26th. And with the help of the Galt Youth Commission, we've received an application from America Velasco. The application's attached to the agenda report. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to appoint America Velasco. Second.
So that's actually not a motion, right? It's just a direct appointment.
Okay, just congratulations. Is she in the audience? Are you here?
America?
Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations, America.
Thank you.
Moving on. Comments by staff. Let's start down here. Mr. Rudolph?
Comment, sir.
Mr. Plaza?
Yeah, just one comment. Council may have noticed that we do not have a strategic plan item on the agenda this time. We were going through the agenda review process with the mayor. We're looking at the projects and priorities and had looked at, you know, we're near or we're getting completed with a lot of those projects. Talked to the mayor and like to kind of regroup with staff, you know, for our next strategic plan process, you know, kind of rebuilding our team with the police chief and interim finance director, hopefully come on board real soon. And looking at April, May of holding another strategic plan meeting, you know, with the council, with staff in the council to take a look at our projects and priorities, you know, to give us time to, you know, kind of get into the budget, you know, and get me familiar with the budget so we can bring, you know, some real substance to the projects, you know, and recommendations to the council for discussion and kind of go through that process probably in April or May and then restart that process on the agenda after that.
Thank you, sir. Steve Drummond?
No, thank you.
You seeing that light at the end of the tunnel?
I'm cautiously optimistic. It may be, it may be a train.
Mr. Solis? Ms. Isles? Paula?
Another no, thank you.
Greg, you done? Okay. Steve?
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to council. We'll just keep it moving. Councilmember Hewer?
Nope, all good.
Councilmember Campion?
Nothing.
Let's go see the events.
Thank you for reminding.
I missed it, so give me some updates here.
The Historical, the Historical Society is having their annual fundraiser at Hunan House on the 18th of February. I know that's coming up real quick. So if anybody needs tickets, they can contact the Historical Society or myself if they're interested in getting tickets.
All right. Councilmember Powers?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Just to remind everybody, the extravaganza's coming up March 19th and I invite any of you that would like to be in the Easter parade to get your bonnets ready or your tricycles or whatever and come out and be part of the parade. Also, I wanted to comment on how nice the TV monitor is in the lobby. It's really, it's really first class, so who's ever responsible on that, a good, good job.
All right. And with that, I have nothing. This meeting is adjourned.